Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. Is our desire to go into a work session. In a work session, may I remind you that we cannot make it take any action. It's for discussion and information only. We want to welcome two people that came tonight out of their valuable time. From the Ph.D. School Board of Directors, Vice President Lori Newton. And welcome you and new in her position, the school principal Kat Perkins. When I mispronounce the name, I feel so bad. If my sincere promise to always written person's name correctly. We are going to allow you to give us your check in. So you may come to the microphone to make sure that it's on. Thank you. My honor.
All right. Well, first I'd like to just introduce myself to you guys, so you know who I am. I came to Douglas County in 2005. And I started working through the ESD at early intervention. So I started my career there. Actually, before that, when I lived, I lived in Salem and I moved in this area, I started working in schools. When I lived there as well. So then, after I was working at the ESD. I went and got my degree and then I started working at Days Creek Charter School as a special education director out there. So I really feel really connected to this community. I have been a 4H leader for almost 10 years. And I had two kids graduate from Roseford High School fairly recently. So I feel like I'm a very connected part of this community, even though I'm a transplant. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background on myself. Does anybody have any questions about me personally before I go on to the report? Okay. All right. So I started with Roseburg or with Phoenix. August, August 15th. So I have only been on the realm for about six weeks. When I first started working with Phoenix, I was working in there, I was called in to help them with their special education program. So I did that during the summer. And then when there is a need to fill the position as an interim principal, I stepped up and offered to do that position. And the reason why I did that was because I had already made a connection with the staff and the students that had been there over the summer. And I really felt a need that this school needed to have a strong leader. And there were some needs that I had identified there at that school. So with that, I'll go over the general updates. We had quite a face change over the summer. We had 14 new faculty. So we had a lot of onboarding. This is a lot for a new principal, but also for a lot of new staff. So I'm going to go ahead and talk about some things here that were added by the executive director that I'm still learning about. S R funds upgraded facility with the H back during the summer. Support staff approached restructuring to focus instructional assistance, student safety and transition services. We're working on contracting adapt for onsite mental health services. As of 9/16, 78% of the students are returning and 22% are new to Phoenix. And I'm going to go over this one page with you in just a moment. I'm not going to read through everything in here unless you guys want me to touch base on something that you've read. The things that I feel are important to discuss are what we've been doing on your goals and let's go ahead and you can see the graphic that we have here. So high school success, attendance and engagement updates. The first 10 days of school, they would say to 30% students attending over 90% of the time. So for our attendance, this is what we're currently doing since I started working beginning of the school year. We are redesigning our systems for engagement and attendance. Our focus will be on eliminating the barriers that cause our students to miss or skip school. This month, we've been working on systems used to identify students at risk of behavioral barriers such as skipping class, anxiety about past school cultures, bullying and harassment trends, and developing systems of accountability with students and staff. The goal number two that you guys had for us was the high school success. Our current progress over the summer, we reviewed our special programs and identified areas in need of improvement. Those improvement areas include identifying students who are eligible and may require a different diploma option, ensuring students have the right placement and identifying students needing interventions. Once school began, we began to work on these systems right away. We continue to have a strong alternative pathways program and have added transition courses to our force matrix. Identifying weaknesses and strengths in ELA and math are also a main objective this year to help with this goal. So I just want to stop here real quick and have you guys check out the bottom portion of this graph. My goal when I first started was to have all students tested using the Star 360 within the first two weeks. That was the goal. We tried to meet that. We did not meet that goal due to staffing shortages as well as technology issues. We had some staff members out in the beginning of the year due to COVID. 101. And now, as of today, we're at 110 out of 173 students. So we're making progress and our goal is still continue to try and get that number up as high as possible. I feel that this particular graph on the bottom is representative of our school population. It was difficult for me to compare previous last year's scores with this year's scores because I don't feel like there was enough. There was enough students tested. So I did not bring that data in. I just didn't feel it was balanced. As you can see, the numbers are very alarming. We have 25% of our students are in urgent need of intervention. This is just average in both realms. 25% are needing intervention, 25% are on watch and 25% are, and this is just average, are on track. That's concerning. So how are we going to approach that with our kids? So that's academic growth and progress.
Hey Kat, can I ask a question just real quick? So what can you help us understand? What are staff doing differently to make sure kids are showing up?
Okay, that's a good question. And that's for our attendance issue. So what we've, what we're working on right now is a system to track attendance as well as have interventions in place for that attendance issue. So when we are finding that kids are not attending, whether it's skipping a few classes or not attending at all, the first contact is contacting their pathways teacher. Their pathways teacher is an individual that's chosen, a teacher that's chosen to be with them through their whole quarter, for their whole time, their time at school. So first, the pathways teacher will talk to the student and try to figure out why, what are the barriers for that student coming to school? And recently, we've noticed there's a lot of issues that come. Then are not only things that are happening at home, but are a result of past school culture. So we've been trying to repair that culture at the school. We've been trying to make that school a safe place for them. We are identifying barriers within their own lives that make them not want to come to school. We have some really amazing programs at Phoenix and some of the ones that were just onboard this summer that we're using as incentives for attendance. So for example, we have recruit hippo, which is an employment opportunity for the kids. We can talk to them about that and say, hey, you know, this is where you want to be in the future. In order to get there, you need to show up and then hand that student off to them so they can explain the opportunities that program can offer them. We also have the Oregon Youth Conservation Corps. So we can also use that as an incentive and say, hey, look at this opportunity that you can do. These kids are leaving. They're getting paid for their work. In order to get to this program, you need to show up. So we're having those conversations with the kids. My goal is to have that whole menu of support and the teachers trained to be able to implement that menu of support. So that when they have that one contact with the kid, that one time that they get to talk to the student, they have all the tools that they need to say, hey, this is, these are your carrots. Let's get you where you need to go. So that's what we're doing right now. Four weeks in, it's really about getting the systems in place to practice and to make sure that's occurring within the staff. And make sure the students that are having the behavioral and tennis issues are tracked and monitored. So I'll skip back to the academic unless anybody has any more questions about the attendance piece. Okay. So looking at these, this this information and with my experience and background in special education, I feel pretty confident that we can work on a plan to get these grades up. One thing that we did right off the bat was we created PLC groups. One of them is a math and English group. We're actually pairing those two together because they are the ones that are assessing the students. We had the math and English teachers assessing that's all of the students in the school. And then whoever did not get tested in that cohort, now we're taking it back to the pathways teacher and making sure that the pathways teachers are watching those kids and making sure they're accountable for taking that test. So that's kind of the phase that we're in right now. We're taking that data back to our teachers and we're designing plans with the teachers on how we are going to address these issues. For example, with the reading, because we have so many students that are lone reading, we're going to be implementing reading strategies across the academic areas and we're going to be doing that at the same time. So we're going to be dealing with each reading strategy in science. It's going to be the same reading strategy in another core subject. So that's, we have strategies that we're working on, but the base of all of this is to be able to track progress, to see where they're at and be able to get that information to the teachers. What I'm also seeing, so you have students that are low and you have strategies that you're building to get them back on track by giving them extra education and you're giving them extra time in classroom. But the other piece of that is to get them re-engaged in school. And I see a lot of problems in that area as far as getting the kids engaged. So that's, that's another piece of the problem. And I think it's a lot of the times the kids that are not engaged, it's tied to behavior and attendance. And so those are other areas that we're tracking. So that we can see that the correlation between the students and their behavior and their engagement. So
Can I ask another question real quick? So on the, on the learning side of things, so do you have a plan to? I know you talked about Star 360, getting some, you know, at least some formative type data where your kids are at to, you know, set that plan in motion. Have you received and do you have a plan for the statewide assessment data embargoed, I think until tomorrow morning? Are you, are you digging into that too as a, as a collection of evidence in terms of where to set those goals in terms of subgroups and ELA and math?
Yes, absolutely. Our plan is to get all that data together and be able to utilize everything that we can from past data and and the data from this year as well. And that's why we felt like it was really, really important because the last few years were so chaotic as far as data goes. And because of COVID, that this is really a good place to have some baseline data because now all the kids are back in school. We have a full program. So absolutely, I'm excited to get involved. I, you're correct. I just meant from COVID. We don't, we're currently not serving kids at home that want to do homeschool instead of being in, but in school. So yeah, we're making progress on that though. We have days where we're getting a lot of students attending and a lot of days that students are not attending. You're absolutely correct. So those are, those are huge concerns of mine as well. And that's one of the things that, that's the top thing that I'm addressing right now with our staff. So we've one of the challenges that we've, that we're experiencing right now is because everybody's new. So we're training on synergy. We're training them how to pull data reports, we're training them how to pull those attendance reports. So that's been a challenge with everybody being new, but that's what we're on, that's what we're doing right now.
The Star 360. How is that different from other assessment tools of your state assessments?
It's, it's based on Oregon standards. It's, it's an assessment tool that will give us information on what areas they're missing and especially when it comes to meeting state standards.
So is it published by some?
It's published by Renaissance Learning Company.
Which? Does anybody, okay.
It's a vendor. So it's a software company. Sorry about that. It's a, it's a common assessment tool in school districts.
And it gives, it gives you sort of more frequent feedback on kids than you get from the state?
Yes, absolutely. We can test them as frequently as we'd like. Our intentions are to get everybody tested and get baseline data and then students that we're working with that we see need interventions and we can prescribe interventions for them and see their progress.
How often would you want to retest them for what you see as a, a good progress? To allow them to grow or?
Ideally, I would like to test them before each end of the trimesters. Although I have, one of my strategies is because we have some students that don't engage in the testing. And so no matter how hard you try, it might not be a valid number. So I am giving students the opportunity. So they'll be, part of my strategy is for, to get their buy-in to the program and to see their scores. So I'm going to present them with their scores and give them the opportunity to take the test again before we do parent teacher conferences where the parents will get a copy of the scores. And so if they choose, if they choose to redo the testing, they can do that in November. So other students, the students that we are doing urgent interventions on will probably test a lot more frequently. And that is, I would say every four weeks if we're progress monitoring on that student, because we can use that program to progress monitor.
And how do you determine special ed? And with your students?
We have a high number of special education students and I believe on one of the reports that that you have, it shows that we're, we have 27 as of that date, but really the numbers I'm seeing is looking more like 36 students. We're still waiting to get some of those students into our information system and to get their IEPs reactivated. So we redesigned our special education program this summer. And so we have a resource room as well as a transitions class. We also have two instructional assistants that's working with, with special education students. So a lot of our special education students are receiving services directly in a resource room for their reading and math. Especially if they're on a modified diploma. And then the other students are getting pushed in support from our instructional assistance. But because our numbers are so low, we're really doing interventions with a lot of students. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question correctly, but I'm going to jump to another point which I think you might be asking is how do you identify students that might need special ed? Is that what you're?
No, I just kind of wanted to know what the makeup was.
Okay, okay. So I think that with with us tracking their behavior and tracking the interventions that we're doing, we'll be able to identify individuals that, that need the special education services that aren't currently being served as well. Sure.
Have you seen the embargo data that's going to be released tomorrow? And if so, what do you think about it?
I have not seen it yet. Are you talking about the one that?
You have?
Okay, yes. Yes, I have. What do I think about it? I'm concerned. I, that's why I took this position. Concerned. And
I think there's good area to be concerned.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I've Being a principal wasn't my my first thought when I started taking, when I took this job in the summer. I hadn't even thought that I would take that role. But when I saw the school and I saw the services that were being offered available to students that had such high need, I was really impressed with the services. With what was happening, I wasn't super impressed with. And I really felt there's a need for somebody to take a strong leadership role and to design and make sure the systems of accountability were in place. And that was really important to me. And that's why I'm here.
You didn't feel like they were in place before?
I'm still discovering if they were or not. I feel that some weren't. Yeah. So I feel like there needs to be some accountability in that area. And I think there needs to be some additional systems in place to make sure that, that things are being tracked appropriately. And you guys have the numbers you need, but also the numbers our students see so that they're successful.
I'll have.
Anybody else?
Well, we, we clearly, we eagerly look forward to seeing the numbers improve.
Yes, me too. I did want to wrap this up. Just with, and I know that we've already talked a lot. I wanted to wrap this up with just like current progress. What, what are we doing right now? So I mentioned that we are redesigning our systems for engagement attendance. We are, we revamped the special ed program. That should have some impact on our graduation rates. And I already talked about ELA and math. We were also redesigning our discipline area and how we're dealing with discipline as well as tracking that. One of the things that happened to me today is I was, I spoke with a parent right before a staff meeting and she came in and she came in because there was a discipline issue. And actually she came in and she brought forth some information about a discipline issue, but she said, this place feels better. This place is really, has really changed. And it really has. If you walk into the building today, it's not the same building that it was last year. We, we were very intentional about that. We had a faculty's manager come in and hope she's, she's a new hire. She did amazing things with the building. It has a fresh new look. Walls have been painted, things have been cleaned up, every broken window is fixed, you know, that saying. And then we have our new staff, which are very energetic. They're very focused and we're not letting things slide. So it's a new feeling and I would encourage you guys to come visit, see how things are going.
I have a couple.
Yes, absolutely.
And welcome.
Thank you.
I did take the time. This was all emailed to us and I read, I read through it. How, since the board members here, how involved was your board in the 2022, 2024 plans? Strategic plan, how involved were you? Because this is, this is a pretty fancy.
Yes. Yeah, we were very involved. It was a UVO speed project, master's program project and they they interviewed all stakeholders and especially with the board. They wanted to make sure that we understood what they were finding, the directions we needed to go. One of the main things they wanted to make sure our because that was not done before. So that was a great piece for them. And that falls to us to do that.
So why wasn't it? I mean, it's been years.
I know. I know. I don't know.
So I look at ours, we're going to approve ours tonight. It's going to be like this. I mean, there's and I look at this glossy thing and, and I get a little nervous. I mean, I get a little bit nervous thinking because of the board and you have a lot of new staff members weren't fully involved in this. This is nothing. This will go, this will go nowhere.
We talked about we do not want it on the show gathering dust. It is a map for tomorrow. Yeah, to have a tendency to be a little longer than it needs to be because these students were very excited about creating strategic plans in education. And although we had a big part of that, it was the UVO project. It kind of worked.
So I'm glad that there's a new feeling. And because we heard, we've heard the same thing, the last few meetings, the recap, the same thing over and over and over. And so I got confidence in you that you and your new team, the communication to us and in person will be different because it's not very good right now.
I acknowledge that. And I look forward to showing you what we can do.
Cool. Thank you.
Hey Kat, I've just got one other thing. I'm going back to old superintendent I worked with for a long, for a long time. We were, when I was a principal, we'd spend hours in data teams looking at data. And he came in one time and he said, he said, don't just weigh the pig, feed the pig.
Yeah.
This stuck with me, right? And so I would say, I mean, our encouragement to you is certainly have to kind of weigh where they're at, right? But I would encourage you to really, really be intentional about feeding. About focus on that instruction piece. And this is why, you know, they need to be there. And then really working on that piece. And I will say, kudos to, we had three year staff members come to our 5D training for, I'm over at the ESD, it was great. Thank you for being there. You were one of them. I appreciate that. Because really it's, you know, we need to make sure with all of our kids that they're getting what they need academically. And I will say, there's going to be a connection to showing up to school when there's meaningful instruction. One of our best strategies to have kids come, sometimes the intervention is just really good instruction.
Yep.
And so make sure we're focusing on that. So
And I would Howard, I would encourage us to a meeting out there. We used to do that on a yearly basis.
We would love that.
Board and tour and
Yeah, absolutely. Anytime.
And I know we can go out on our own, but I think it's really powerful.
Andrew and I
I'm just saying it always worked. It was always a good visit.
I want to personally thank you for taking the time to come. I want to share with you that this is not over yet. We as a board will get together and discuss all the statistics and data that we have been presented. So we can follow up with questions that will get the attention that we desire and the answers that we can both live with. We look forward to you in your new position and we wish you the best of luck. And if there's any way we can help you, call me. But we will need time to just to digest and discuss it. Thank you ever so much. I appreciate your time coming tonight. As you're walking out the door, the next item on our work session, we like to have some continued discussion and come to a consensus before we go into a regular meeting about which one of these would be the desired strategic plan. I don't believe they are numbered. So we may have to reach the conclusion of how to get them numbered.
I did mine in order here. I just self-numbered them as they came.
I'm going to hold up this one that has on the outer circle at the very top, excellent. And we'll make that number one. This is not a voting process. This is a The second one that I like to make it number two has the same wording, but the excellence in education is in the light gray area underneath the statements. That'll be number two. And both of those are horizontal in presentation. Number three will be the one where in the center, the last two words are individual success. That'll be number three. And last but not least, the number four would be where the last three words are most successful future. Everybody on the same page? Okay. Now we can entertain some discussion. There's several ways we can go about this and I'm going to clear out as an option. One way would be to have superintendent put them on a board and walk around with stickers and sticker approval on it. Or we can just do a voice vote and eliminate one for sure, leave it down to three, then we can eliminate one more, bring it down to two. And then those two will be the final discussion. I'm open to skinning this onion either way.
Just a reminder, we have Director Sherklett is with us. Just a reminder, we have Director Kirkland is with us on, um. In Zoom, just step away, okay?
We don't do.
Director Kirkland.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right. Everybody on the same page? How we want to address. Narrowing down our focus?
Well, we could, we could try to define what the differences are among these. My recollection from before was that Rebecca was concerned if our only objective seemed to be graduated from high school. That she thought that undercut the kids who, uh, were prepared to to really soar and do better than that. That's why a couple of these talk about, uh, success beyond high school rather than rather than graduation. And I don't know if that's a, if we all agree that that's a big thing to be concerned about. I think it is. So, I mean, I'm, I'm. But some of them go on beyond that, that four.
So you like four?
Yeah.
You like four? And.
Andrew Harris.
So let me put the, uh, summation, summaries it. The one that I indicate number one is out. The one that I indicate number two is out. And when you indicate number three is out, we're now left with the desire to be number four. I would like to share again, being repetitive again, how important it is for this to be a unanimous vote. We can achieve great things. We don't always have to agree to every verb and pronoun, but if we get that main focus. We're all on the same page and respect each other's opinion, respect each other's viewpoint. We could put this in the process and be prepared if events come tomorrow or the day after. That we have no control over. We in the industry like to say acts of God. We can then tweak this and address it, but we need this to get moved tonight. We do need to, there's a sense of urgency on my.
I'll be honest, I do like the quote that was around on one, but, uh. I like the message of four better.
Well, with that in mind, what we will, what we will need to do, we all agree that number four dead. Uh, are the one we desire to move forward with. We will need to adjourn our work session. Reopen in public session and it will be the. Second item on the agenda and we will need a motion at second and everybody vote for it. Yeah. Are we all on the same page? Good. Executive work section is hereby included and we will reconvene in three and a half minutes. In the regular section.
Yeah, we're going from.
And I'll be honest with you, it was like the most bizarre activities. That it was a grad project and that ended up itself. It set up, the length of it set up to be six and a one and a half in binder for a while.
Thank you.
Okay, Andrew will be on here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we will now call to order our regular word meeting. Welcome you and we will open with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join us with me if I need it from the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Communication to the board?
Uh, we'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Great to see everybody. Uh, greetings, Director Strickland on Zoom tonight. Hello. And we'd like to excuse Vice Chair Larson, uh, this evening as well. Terms of review of the agenda, no changes had made. Since that agenda was published on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda?
Oh, no, we just seen motion on that.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make that motion.
Need a second? It has been moved in seconds for the, to approve the consent agenda. Are you ready for the question? Although the favor is the eye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We are now going to open up for public participation. There will be a twenty minute time limit for all of the participants and two minutes per participant. Assistant Superintendent Dean will be the monitor of the clock. Are there any public participation? Be sure to turn on the mic and be sure to mention your name and address.
Hello again, I'm Taylor Underwood, seventeen seventy-six, New York month. Uh, my property porters, uh, the Hugh Crest Elementary School. Um, I just wanted to again talk about the fence and, um, that's going to be installed in in the schools, particularly Hugh Crest Elementary. Uh, last time I was here, I I talked about how, uh, the fence would not be a good deterrent, uh, for any bad guys that, uh, can easily get over it or through it. There are a couple of additional things that I wanted to mention. Uh, for one, the proposed flats for the fence, um, does have the benefit of, uh, helping to make sure that bad guys have a hard time seeing through the fence. But it also has the drawback of making sure that good people can't see either. Uh, for what few events that we've had at Hugh Crest Elementary with vandalism or anything, it's always been the neighbors that have called the police. Uh, and allowed for them to respond. So that would be, uh, very difficult with a fence that is seven foot tall that we can't really see through. So you lose out. On that neighborhood, uh, participation, looking out for the kids, looking out for the school grounds. Uh, reading through the county codes, it looks like that there would be a five foot, uh, setback between, uh, the private fences and the. School fence. Um, that would mean more, uh, more maintenance for the school district since it'd be school district property. And, uh, from my observations, the maintenance unit has, uh, more to maintain than they can already. Uh, string trimming around that elementary school is is few and far between. They've only done the benches around the track once in the last year. And that's when the grass was so tall that you couldn't even sit on the bench, uh, for anything around the fences. It's always been the homeowners. That have gone to the other side of the fence and string trimmed it. So a five foot gap, uh, is just gonna cause a lot of weeds, overgrown grass. Uh, and debris. Uh, it also provides a semi-private way for potential vandal to come along and vandalize, not only the school fence, but. Uh, private fences as well. And we would be the ones that have to look at that, which is not good for, uh, our property values or our families to see whatever graffiti people put on. Two minutes goes by that fast, huh? Wow, okay. Uh, well, then I'm gonna send you guys an email with, uh, the other few points, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other participants?
If anyone who is on Zoom would like to participate, please raise your hand at this time.
Thank you very much. Item number one on the agenda for tonight is policy J H C D slash J H C D A. And A A C D and A C H C D R. Uh, so would you like to address that?
Sure, you bet. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to talk about this for a few minutes. I I wanted to frame, um, this policy instead of, uh, it just. I know you had a chance to read this. There have been some amendments. There's, uh, the copy sent in the board packets and thank Director Lee. Who's had some great questions and we've made some amendments there. But before we jump into this, I want to frame this in terms of the why with this policy. We have seen in our county and our state and our country, although it's been more prolific. Uh, on the West Coast and, uh, documented than any area I know across the nation, a rise in fentanyl and opioids. Uh, and deaths, particularly with, um, with youth. Um, a little bit about about fentanyl that is interesting. Um, you cannot see visibly fentanyl. You cannot smell fentanyl. Um, you don't know if you're handling a pill with fentanyl. Um, fentanyl, uh, researcher says, you know, somewhere between fifty to a hundred times more potent than morphine. And an overdose can happen in a bunch of different ways or exposure to fentanyl. Um, most experts say about two grains of sand of fentanyl. Uh, could cause an overdose, but fentanyl also, um. Uh, oftentimes I think in my mind, I oftentimes think about someone willfully taking a pill, maybe not even noting what it is. Maybe they think it's oxycontin. And it's, um, you know, someone's on social media. They think there are some app, they're buying something. They don't know what they're getting. Fentanyl has always been pushed by drug, um, drug dealers, uh, without, uh, any oversight of, uh, product development. But but what is interesting about fentanyl and some of the recent exposure, even in our county, is that overdoses have actually happened through absorption. Just handling something in contact and shaking a hand with someone who's had fentanyl can cause a reaction to fentanyl. Um, in two thousand twenty, the Centers for Disease Control, um, did pilot, this is a public health crisis. With a particular emphasis on the I five corridor, which is where, uh, the large majority of fentanyl, not just in Oregon, but across the country is coming. Uh, I think recently the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, um, uh, posted another plea for people to be aware about this. And because of this crisis, this policy adjustment that is proposed tonight, that sits under, um, policy J. Which is directly rated to students. Um, we'll be talking about that a little bit tonight. The proposal tonight is. Adding, uh, Narcalox or Narcan into this policy that would allow and give permission for schools to administer. Narcan in the event of a suspected opioid. Um, could be overdose or exposure. Currently, um, and we do have, uh, schools have had a training on this and our secondary schools particularly. Have access to Narcan but are not able to use that because it's not in our policy right now. Um, the Director Lee brought up some good points about, um, I think they were great points and and around. Why does it live in the student section? Why isn't it in policy A or is it community relations or employees? But I was reminded today, as you may have seen in an email, that e- even in policy J, specific to students, it does apply to any patron. Any staff member, a child, this can be universally, um, used, uh, per this policy. Even though it lives in J. And it would, and we can have a, when I say patron, it could be, it could be someone that is, uh, passing through the school. And we've had our own issues, even in our own building where we had somebody come into this building, uh, a couple of weeks ago that. Um, uh, could have been suspected of, um, of being, um, under the influence of an opioid. So my ask tonight, and I'm happy to to, uh, answer any questions you might have, is that the board, um, approve tonight? This policy that would allow schools to, uh, be able to administer Narcan in the event of a suspected opioid overdose. Whether that be a student, a parent, whether it be a patron on school property, and this would be, uh, available for use. Um, on any of our school properties. Now, one thing to, in case you don't know, uh, the product that we've been. Uh, given and is being used across, uh, I think most of, at least most of Oregon, it is across the county. Is a nasal spray. And, um, the the pathology of this is, um, interesting in the fact that. Uh, if it was a seizure and, uh, say a person was, um, displaying signs of a potential opioid overdose. But it was maybe a seizure that the impact of Narcan is. It's, it's not a negative impact, we're told. Doctors continue to say you can give someone an arc, Narcan. Uh, and we've got a doctor in the house, maybe he can help us with this, but, um, we continue to hear, this is a drug that you can administer. Even if the suspected, um, reason for the way someone's acting or how, you know, maybe they're, uh, on the ground, not breathing, whether that might be. Uh, there's no real negative impact of Narcan. Um, so, uh, with, uh, I would encourage the board and, um, and happy to answer questions tonight. To approve this policy that would allow us to then follow up on the training and make sure we have a process in place. To, um, administer this in the event it needs to be administered in our schools.
So, um, I just want to touch on this for a second. I've seen, uh, Narcan or naloxone or it goes by several other names. I I've seen it used and the problem with opioids and fentanyl is that it lowers your respiratory drive. And fentanyl is so potent that it can lower the respiratory drive where people can be breathing and then not. And I've seen Narcan save lives. Right in front of me. People not breathe, they get Narcan and they wake up shortly. It is powerful and it's safe and, um, I would hate something bad to happen. If it was available and wasn't used.
Yeah, my, my concern was that I, and A, I think it is important that we have a policy that allows. Staff to use this stuff in life-threatening circumstances without much delay. I was concerned that the way we had it. We have an existing medications program that is aimed at situations where kids. Need medications for known conditions. Their parents give us permission to administer those sorts of things. We have paperwork involved in it. Sometimes I think we have staff who may be giving injections to kids. So you want to have people that are pretty well trained.
I have a son who does that.
Okay, well, and 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 at a certain point, kids learn to do their own injections. But it's, it's all a culture of. Letting the schools perform a service for kids that need it on a regular basis. This policy puts Narcan into that situation. And Narcan is almost always an emergency not foreseen. So I wanted to make sure that we made some amendments to the proposed. AR and, uh, and and rule that would let Narcan be used on an emergency basis. And these do that. I'd still like to see this, um. Cleaned up maybe with separate rules for emergency lifesaving processes. Processes versus ordinary medications, but I want to get something done now, so I.
I think, I think you can equate it to something like an EpiPen. Or something like that, that it's only used in an emergency. People don't use EpiPens out of routinely, you know, not, it's not like insulin or something like that. But we, we allow EpiPens.
Well, and EpiPens, you have enough training to tell people that they should give it to the person. In their thigh, you don't give them, give it to them where they're swelling when they've got the. Allergy, there's always some training, but it's pretty simple.
And where this is, you know, this is nasally inhaled. This is better than injections.
The third thing I thought about is those, those boxes we have on the wall to revive people when they have heart attacks.
AEDs.
Yes, we don't, we don't require people to have.
CPR.
CPR training or anything like that to do that, because you can read the instructions on the box, you can read the instructions on the Narcan box, but. I, I think we could make things clear in another version of this, of these rules, but let's get something adopted now.
Okay.
I appreciate that. And I mean, we do have a culture of consent with respect to distribution of medications that is necessary. When we especially working with families and however you bring the point up that, that being trained could be a delay in a response. So I do think in the, in the short term. The, the board approval of this policy, let's just move forward with that. On the back end, if the board. Wants to have a separate Narcan policy, make some amendments to this. I don't know that it will be, that it will live statewide in policy J. Robert and I were on the phone with OSBA today. They're looking at maybe a different place and maybe some different language. But I do think this fits the, the culture of consent we need around distribution of medications and also allows us to move quickly in the event of a perceived emergency.
And doesn't the footnote, number one, the red. Print, doesn't that do that? I mean, to me, that, that is emergency. Where you wouldn't notify parents.
Yeah, that was the intent and that actually came thanks to Director Lee has some questions about this. So that footnote was amended. That, that essentially says, you know, in the event of an emergency, prior notice may not be possible.
That's, that's actually kind of confusing because the red is footnote one on page one of the policy. And then the second paragraph. On page two talks about needing. Needing consent, and then it has another footnote one, I think is relating back to the first footnote one. It's, but the, the idea comes through even if.
Any other thought? There is a sense of urgency, that's why we have an affirmative second reading, so we can implement this right away. I'd like to share some street knowledge with you. The drug world. The higher the doses and the closer oppression is to die in. The more the drug dealer sells. Because if somebody gets a hit and almost dies, it must be good stuff to everybody goes out and buys it. And I speak from experience, so if we were to buy it after immediately asked me. So, with that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we need to have a motion for a first and second reading and a second. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. That the first and second reading of policy A A C D has passed. Thank you very much.
And that, that includes the A I that goes with it.
Correct. And how will we communicate this with our parents? Policy, they should know.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
You guys will figure that out.
We will, thank you.
Yeah, because we voted, we got to tell everybody.
I'm sure they all watched tonight, so.
Director Freeman is, is on that. Thank you.
Super. May I ask personally if you run into any glitches in getting information out? And maybe we should have some kind of documentation that is done. What do you think?
How would you like me to document that? Just copy you on the.
Whatever would, would allow us to have something to look at, hard copy or electronic copy to look at later on and say, this person was. Trained and authorized and.
Oh, I got, so you want, so we do record those that are trained. We have documentation of that. I apologize. I thought you were asking documentation that that information would be sent out. You want to know who's been trained and delivering that.
I think it's just a way of being tidy.
I think Director Cotton was asking about just more of a, a parent advisory. Just letting them know.
This is a board approved this to have.
Okay, out to the public.
Yeah, the, the parents should know, you know, that's, that's another, you know. Yeah, your son came to school and. And oh, I didn't know you guys were doing that.
Yeah.
We say your son's.
I will work with Assistant Superintendent Nee, who is a master of sending out. Public announcements and we will get that out.
This is a big deal to me.
How the recommendation is that if you give somebody Narcan, you still call the ambulance.
Moving forward. The next item on the agenda tonight is to approve the twenty-two slash twenty-three strategic plan as recommended. That is the one that in the center of the document says all students will receive the care. Support and instruction needed to graduate from high school. With plan for their most successful futures. May I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the number four, which you just read the centerpiece of.
Do I have a second? Those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That directly reflect that with a unanimous vote. We will not have a directive report tonight. We have accomplished a lot of great work that was necessary and needed timely. And as your chair, I'm grateful for your help and your support. Be there, nothing else before them. The chair, meeting is adjourned.